Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the City of Virginia, Virginia City Council Committee, the whole meeting. We are live streaming as we always are now from here on forward. For those of you who are listening at home, welcome. Those who are in the audience making presentations and here to listen about the agenda items we have, welcome to the committee, the whole meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. It's 9:00 AM Tuesday, October 15th, 2019. All members of the council and the mayor are present, and I will turn this meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis-Britt.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is Brenda Schaefer-Pellinon from ARDC regarding the Arrowhead Area Agency on Aging.
Good morning and welcome. Green button.
Thank you very much. My name is Brenda Schaefer-Pellinon. I am a planner with the Arrowhead Area Agency on Aging. We are part of the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission. I had contacted Ms. Bennis about, just to talk with her a little bit about kind of what we do as an agency and how we might be able to work with you guys in the local government. And she suggested that this might be a good venue for us to share information and a little more informal and be able to ask questions and such. So we're going to go through just kind of an overview of what we do as an agency, what our role is, and the various different work that we do in the region. Okay, so how it began. The Older Americans Act of 1965 was the first federal-level initiative aimed at providing comprehensive services for older adults. It created the National Aging Network comprised of the Administration on Aging at the federal level, the state units of aging at each state level, and then the area agencies of aging at the local level. So the area agencies on aging, we really are the boots-on-the-ground kind of version here. The network provides funding based on the percentage of an area's population that is 60 and older, for nutrition, support, home, community-based services, disease and prevention and health promotion services, elder rights, the National Caregiver Support Program, as well as the Native American Caregiver Support Program. And this is the part where, as long as we're mentioning it here, I'll go back and put in the plug for the importance of the completion of the census forms in our communities because our funding in the region for older adults, much like other areas, does depend on that funding. The United States statutes-at-large, 79, statute 218, was signed into law by the 36th President of the United States, Lyndon Johnson, on July 14th, 1965. 2006, we went through a reauthorization of the act in its entirety, and we are in the process right now of going through a reauthorization as well. So just kind of a visual demonstration of kind of how that flow of both funding as well as decision-making goes from the U.S. Administration on Aging down to the State Board on Aging, which is housed as part of the Department of Human Services, down to the area agencies on aging, which I work for, and then out to the home and community-based service providers in the region. So why area agencies on aging? The Older Americans Act was intentionally designed to make use of the AAA's to allow the flexibility granted by the act to enhance the local needs and preferences and taking those into consideration and developing a resulting local delivery system for those services in the community. So area agencies on aging, the majority of them in Minnesota are private nonprofit corporations, with the exception of two regions, that is us and Land of the Dancing Sky up in northwestern Minnesota. We still fall under the Regional Development Commission for the area. And then we also have one of the area agencies on aging that is overseen by the Chippewa Tribes. So each of the areas develop and administer an area plan which coordinates the service delivery, which means we're looking to strengthen, maintain, or reestablish the independence of older adults in their homes, and also try to put off the reliance on the public safety net for as long as possible. So keeping people off of medical assistance or elderly waiver, keeping them out of a skilled nursing facility as long as possible. So we know that the aging of our nation's programs, such as Social Security, Medicare, and our aging population, will challenge the federal entitlement program known as Medicaid. But there's little awareness that this shift will also significantly increase the demand on home and community-based services, like those that are supported and funded by the area agencies on aging. And like I was saying, the cost for home and community-based services, so services for an individual in the home, is far, far less than the cost of an institutional care option, like a skilled nursing facility. So bringing dollars to the people where they live saves their own private dollars, and it also saves public dollars, and makes more sense both from a financial prospect and also from the point of view of the individual whose lives we're talking about. So the AAA's contract with local service providers to deliver most of the aging services. We do have one direct service that we provide, and I'll get back to that, providing services such as meals, transportation, in-home services. And in Minnesota, all of the AAA's are direct providers of information and referral and assistance services. So that is our one direct service, including case management, benefits, and health insurance counseling, as well as family caregiver support programs. Just a little bit of a demonstration of where the funding for Medicare is going, where the levels of Older Americans Act funding has gone, and alongside the increasing aging Coming off of a little bit of a head cold, so a little dreggy there. Okay, so the Minnesota area agencies on aging. As I mentioned, we have got seven area agencies on aging. We have us up in the Arrowhead region, Land of the Dancing Sky up in the northwestern portion, the Central, Minnesota River down in the southwestern portion of the state, and then the southeastern Agency on Aging, and then the metropolitan Agency on Aging, along with the Minnesota Chippewa Tribes, AAA. And that covers, they cover Boys' Fort, Grand Portage, Leech Lake, and White Earth. So the area agencies on aging are governed by commissions or board of directors. In our case, we fall under the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission. But the Older Americans Act also gives a strong supervisory role to advisory councils. And our advisory council, we'll get to in a second, has representation from each of the counties in the region, representing the views of older adults, conducting public hearings about the needs in the region, reviewing and commenting on policy changes at the state and federal level, and advising and assisting staff in planning and allocating funds, which is where my role comes into play. So our current committee on aging, not going to go through all of this, but you'll probably see some names that'll stand out to you, folks that you know. We're very lucky to have such good representation throughout the region and have folks who bring a lot of wonderful experience to the table. So the core functions of the AAA's in Minnesota. As I was mentioning, we administer the dollars from the Older Americans Act that come down from the federal government. We fund core services to help people remain in their homes. That's things like Meals on Wheels, chore services, transportation, caregiver support, and legal services through the legal aid services of northeastern Minnesota. We also do service development. A portion of my job is in that area, where we're working, collaborating with communities, counties, health and human service and social service providers to meet the increased local capacity and the needs of the aging population. We do that through coordination of caregiver support, volunteer-based services, and community services. And then we have the one direct service component of our agency, which is the information and assistance portion, which you may or may not be familiar with, is under the name Senior Linkage Line. I actually did, when I came back up to, I'm originally from the Iron Range, and when I came back up to northern Minnesota, that's where I started with the agency, was working in the information and assistance and counseling area for the first two and a half years, providing seniors, families, and caregivers with information about what services are available, doing long-term care planning, helping with reviewing insurance options, doing in-person appointments with individuals, and also doing education sessions. I taught Introduction to Medicare, A to D, here through Virgin Community Ed, I taught over in Hibbing, also taught Duluth. So we provide those types of services throughout the region. How our work is guided. Our work is based on the state plan focus areas where the state-level board pulls together consumer groups and surveys stakeholders. One thing, area where we get a lot of our information from is the gaps analysis, which is done by the Department of Human Services in coordination with us, and we're actually in the process of that right now. We're going to be doing that next week. The gaps for us in the region for over the last several years have, primary ones have been housing, transportation, but also chore service, workforce, and then crisis stabilization and respite services in the region. So what we're going to be focusing on coming up with the new, the next gaps analysis this next week, we're going to have sessions that we're convening with stakeholders across the region on housing and transportation services. And each region has, we have, they're pretty consistent from region to region, but there are always a little bit of differences, and so those two are the ones that are, seem to be the most prevalent in our area. And then the AAA's develop an area plan and engage the local service providers to carry out those planned activities with funding and technical assistance and support from the AAA's. So our local plan focus areas, administrative excellence, equitable funding distribution and development, access, working on direct development of direct services, providing technical assistance to partners, and then advocacy. System development, working with projects coming down from the state level like Communities for a Lifetime, and also working on the Live Well at Home program, as well as providing advocacy. Another partnership that we have in the region that's a pretty powerful partnership is we work with the Northland Foundation on their Rural Aging Initiative. We provide technical assistance to their grantees as well. The way things work, we happen to have a lot of overlap between the grantees that we work with and the grantees that they work with, and so it really makes sense for us all to be working together since we're all pulling in the same direction. So the grants that we've worked with them on, they've had innovation grants, they provided $150,000 to three organizations, jumpstart grants, $55,000 to 11 organizations, and collaboration grants, providing $20,000 to each of two organizations. Another one of the grants that I work with directly is the Live Well at Home Grant, where the Live Well at Home Grants seek to encourage innovation, both in services and service delivery mechanisms in the region. These are just some examples of ones that we've had in the last couple of years, through Aiken County Care, that one was a caregiver one, and I won't go through all of those. You can see what those ones have amounted to. But one of our big ones also always is legal aid services of northeastern Minnesota. We help to provide the funds for the Senior Citizens Law Project, which allows seniors to access legal services at no cost, and there are no income guidelines on that. We also, I also work with the state dementia grants coming down from the Department of Human Services, partnerships with organizations like Age Well Arrowhead up here in the region, in Duluth, Koochiching Aging Options up in I Falls. So who do we work with? We form partnerships with organizations in the seven county Arrowhead region through the program that I work, which is the Elder Care Development Partnership Program, providing technical assistance to grantees, and we also work with Title III Older Americans Act grantees or potential grantees. So in our area, the organizations we work with, we work with AEOA across the region. We work with Aiken County Care in Aiken, Age Well Arrowhead in southern St. Louis County, Angels of McGregor in Aiken, the Arrowhead Parish Nurse Association across the region, Care Partners up in Cook, community partners in Lake County, the Consumer Directions, which is their organization that provides fiscal services to individuals who want to hire their own caregiver. It might be private pay, it might be under a county waiver, but allows them to, they carry out the fiduciary responsibilities for those contracts. Also Duluth Lighthouse for the Blind, based in Duluth, but they do provide services to individuals across the region. Also Elder Circle in Itasca County, Floodwood Services and Training in northern St. Louis County, Koochiching Aging Options, as I mentioned, legal aid services in northeastern Minnesota, Lutheran Social Service, providing services across the region like senior companion services and things like that. Northwoods, sorry, North Shore Area Partners in Lake County, Northwoods Partners up in Ely up in northern St. Louis County, and then in my neck of the woods, Volunteer Services of Carlton County. Just to kind of give you an idea, just a visual demonstration of the number of people per square mile in each of our seven counties, and then comparing that with the number of adults who are age 60-plus per square mile in those counties. The average age by county, and this is all information from the last 2010 census, and then the 60-plus population by county. Obviously, St. Louis County makes them a big chunk of our folks. But when you look at it, when you look at how many individuals are in each of those counties, actually, the oldest county in the state of Minnesota is Aiken County. They have the highest number based on the number of individuals in the county and the number of people who are 60-plus. They have the oldest population and are spread out, most unfortunately also. So in 2018, we awarded 28 grants to 14 agencies with Title III federal Older Americans Act dollars and other federal and state funds totaling $2.4 million. Those include, you'll see, the Title III C, that is nutrition. So those are your congregate dining sites and your Meals on Wheels in the region. Title III B, those are supportive services like chore services, transportation, things like that, those legal services. Title III D, which is the evidence-based health promotion and disease prevention classes and things like that. And then the Title III E, which is caregiver services. And we're actually, right now, we're in the midst of a competitive grant round right now, and we are in the process of our advisory, our task force, the advisory task force is in the process of reviewing all the applications for Title III funds, and we should be awarding those by the end of the year. So just to kind of give you an idea of what those numbers look like, those dollars look like, and the number of people, we're looking at 1,715 hours of chore services provided in the region, 655 hours of consultation with individuals, 3,227 hours of homemaker services, and amazing, 154,636 meals served to 7,184 people in congregate dining sites, and another 93,932 meals served through Meals on Wheels in the region. Respite, 8,323 hours of respite. So for caregivers, individuals who are responsible for someone who need to be able to get out of the house, to be able to take care of errands, to spend, have some time for themselves. So that's where the respite comes in. And then caregiver counseling, 4,583 hours. And then the rest of the services, the Senior Linkage Line, and then the transportation services, 8,659 hours. It's amazing when you look at, I mean, how many miles that is, and that's almost all provided by volunteers in the region. Almost all of these services are provided by volunteers in the region. So it speaks volumes, I think it speaks well of our region, the fact that we have a system that is so heavily volunteer-focused but is so strong. Just to give you kind of an idea, this is, we've got, so we have a partner in each of the counties, so this is kind of how they are spread out through the region. The area that I work under the Elder Care Development Partnership, or you'll see it referred to as EDP, we operate under a yearly work plan. Our goal, our job, is to expand and strengthen the capacity of those local, those home and community-based service providers and work to address gaps in the region. As I mentioned before, the gaps that we've been dealing with pretty consistently are transportation, crisis stabilization, including respite and caregiver services, workforce and volunteerism, chore services, and housing. So we provide technical assistance in the seven county Arrowhead region for those grantees and potential grantees for that particular grant. You know, we've had, prior to the beginning of this year, we had one person doing that Elder Care Development Partnership work, and so we had one person who was really doing everything that was absolutely necessary for that job and to fulfill our contract, but we didn't have the ability to go much beyond that and really start developing more partnerships and opportunities within the region. And so I actually came on as a planner at the beginning of this year along with another staff person. And so now we actually have the ability to go out and proactively be pursuing those partnerships and those opportunities with local government, with the healthcare systems, with community organizations, with communities of faith throughout the region. So I'm really excited about it. The challenge of it, though, is going out and telling people, we've been around for how long, and this is who we are. And you may know some little parts about us, but you may not know all of the things that we do or all of the possibilities that are there. The direct service portion of our office, the Senior Linkage Line, is broken down into three different components. We have the information and assistance specialists. Those are the folks that answer those phone lines and provide experience with, provide, share their experience with Medicare knowledge, helping people do long-term care options counseling, connecting folks to resources. I point these guys out because today is the beginning, first day of open enrollment for Medicare for 2019, and so these guys are hard at work right now back in the office. We also do the pre-admission screening for anybody who is going into a skilled nursing facility that, to ensure that if they are going to be there under medical assistance, that they meet the criteria for that skilled nursing stay, or a hospital swing bed, or certified boarding care. And the other program that we run through Senior Linkage Line, which is a really, really exciting program, is Return to Community. Those folks are social workers that go out into the community, and it used to be, when the program initially came about, it was just, we were serving individuals who were in a skilled nursing facility, and they wanted to move back out to a community setting. They wanted to go back, wanted to return home, they wanted to get an apartment, they wanted to move out of that skilled nursing facility. Since then, the program has been fabulously successful, and they've actually expanded it now to include individuals who are, might be on getting home care services that Medicare is paying for, and they are running out of that, that Medicare service is going to be stopping, but they still would benefit from receiving services in the home, so to help them connect with programs and financing to help them remain in the home. And then also helping folks who just are living in the community, want to continue remaining there, and they might just need a little bit of extra help, whether it's just themselves or them and a caregiver, trying to figure out how to fit all the pieces together to make that work. Whether that is finding services in the area, whether that is working out their insurance, whether that is applying for county programs so that they can get on something like an elderly waiver with the county. The social workers go out and work with those individuals in their homes where they are right now to help them make that transition successful or to help them remain where they are in their homes for as long as they can successfully. The last portion of our organization we have is branded under Juniper. Juniper is a statewide system of health promotion and evidence-based wellness classes. We have Georgia Lane in our office who coordinates those programs throughout the seven counties. Those classes are actually delivered by service delivery organizations, so things like AEOA or things like Elder Circle out in the individual communities. But they're all, it's the consistent classes from no matter where you take it, and you can access those classes anywhere in the region. So you're able to go, someone's able to go on to your juniper.org, look at, or they can call Senior Linkage Line or call Juniper, and you let them know where they live, and we can connect them with the programs that are available in their area. They're all low-cost or no-cost. No one is turned away for an inability to pay. The really exciting thing is it's been very well-received by the, some of, by the insurance companies, primarily right now the ones that are like Blue Cross that cover people who are dual-eligible, so people who are on Medicare and medical assistance through the county. And so right now, we've got, Juniper, we have got a contract with Blue Cross to provide classes at no cost to the Mshow clients, the Minnesota Senior Health Options clients throughout the region. And they also, since they are dual-eligible, can also access transportation to get to those classes as well. And the classes are things like living well with chronic conditions, living well with chronic pain, diabetes prevention and management, things like falls prevention, matter of balance, Tai Chi Kuan, things like that. That is my spiel for the morning. Really, I've got, I'll leave some things here, guys, for you guys. I would love to talk more about, you know, we are out in the communities. I always see, kind of, when people ask me what my job is, I usually explain to people that my job is, I'm basically a conduit. So I'm all over the place, and I'm talking with the folks over at the healthcare systems, and I find out that they want to work on this, but I also know that these guys over here are working on it, and so making those connections and helping to foster those collaborations across the region. I was mentioning to Councilor Johnson a little while ago, one of the things that I'm working on right now is, I happen to have been meeting with the Career Academy Coordinator over at the Hibbing High School, Michael Brown, and we were talking about kind of ways that we could work together and ways that we could create opportunities for each other's organizations. And a few days later, I happened to have been talking to Brady Malika, who is the statewide coordinator for the Scrubs Camps. Scrubs Camps are healthcare careers, experience camps for middle school and high school students. And And Brady happened to mention the fact that they were looking for, they were looking to expand to four more camps this next year. And so we pulled together folks from, we pulled Dr. Schmidt together from Virginia Schools, folks from Chisholm Schools, from Hibbing, along with, now we've got Mountain Iron Buell and St. Louis County Schools, as well as the Itasca Area Schools Collaborative on board, and we're planning a camp. We're gonna have the first Scrubs Camp on the Iron Range in August 4th and 5th of 2020. We have folks from, all three of the local health systems are on board, with helping to plan it and provide resources and plan it. And so it's just kind of an example of the kind of things, you know, we have workforce needs in the area, obviously, and for me, my area happens to be in the home and community-based services, the assisted livings, the skilled nursing facilities. But the need overall for workers in the healthcare sector is pretty substantial and is going to continue to be that by going into the future. And so anything that we can do to help foster those partnerships, to bring opportunities like that into the region, that's kind of our, that's our goal. So anyways, if anybody has any questions. I'm originally, I am a Ranger. I'm from Buell, graduated from Mountain Iron Buell, and spent about 20 years away from here, but looked for every opportunity to come home and did about 20 years working in the legislature, working in the Senate, and came back up here about three years ago. And I'm really excited to be back up here and to be looking to provide ways for our families to be able to, for the youth to be able to remain here if they want to, and be able to have jobs, and to, for the older adults to be able to stay in the communities that they have lived in their entire lives and where they want to remain. So.
Thank you. Just before we go to the rest of the councils, I just want to say thank you for your help and your work with Happy Dad Humanity. It really is a great organization, and utilizing your services to help facilitate some of these homes for the people who really need one is very important. So your services are well-received and appreciated there at Happy Dad Humanity. And I just want to give one recognition. I know we have a lot of really great volunteers, but I've had the opportunity to work, and so many of these other councils maybe as well, and people that come in with Harry Garnage over at the assisted living over there on Fifth Avenue. He does a wonderful job. I've sent in his Elder Care Services Committee, Community Means, and he's just, he's a really good facilitator, so great volunteer and a representative of your organization. So thank you. We'll go from right to left here. We'll first start with Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming. Thank you for tolerating our construction, our deconstruction noises. I have a couple of questions. With mental health being a focus on such a national level, I didn't really notice any mental health components as you were going through that. Is that something that you do work on? Can you share a little bit about that?
Yep, absolutely. We do, it generally has been falling under the crisis stabilization. So maybe been working with folks at organizations like Birch Tree and the Human Development Center, and trying to get something set up up here with range mental health.
Okay. And then my other question is about the GLBT community. That's something on the Iron Range that we've got Lutheran Social Services is working with youth and together with youth in that. Is that anything that you have looked at or supporting our elders who may be in that community?
Yeah, we actually did training earlier this year for the, for our partners, as well as staff from the assisted livings and skilled nursing facilities we did over in Mountain Iron with Rajan Moon, do with Training to Serve and Justice Health, on helping, you know, I love that when Rajan comes in and he does a training, he says, "I'm not here to try to change anyone's mind about how they feel about anything. What I'm here to do is to," we all have, we have a responsibility to serve people and to serve people the best way that we can, and giving people the tools to do that. And the training, actually, the training we did in Mount, that we had in Mountain Iron, we actually exceeded the number of people that we trained in Duluth for one of the trainings. So we did, we trained 45 people earlier this year on it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Counselor Barabu?
I have a couple of questions for you. For full disclosure, I am on the ARDC Board, or Commission, I should say, not the Board. The Senior Linkage, do you know what the status is? Last year, they were concerned about a lot of the insurances disappearing from the seven county areas. That happened this year. I'm gonna miss the meeting next week, so I've got another commitment. But has that been reduced down now? Because there were like seven different areas that seniors could go into. What's the status this year on that for healthcare?
Nothing changed with us again for cost plans. The cost plans continue to be available in all seven of our counties. The trigger point for when those, when the availability of cost plans, when that would cease, is based on the, each of the individual competing advantage plans having a minimum threshold of enrollees in the region. And until there are enough people who are enrolled in the other type of plan, the advantage plans, things like the UKR, Ascensia Care, and things like that, that's when that trigger would happen. And we just haven't, you know, and some of it might be just the networks and the fact that there's, and that they, the insurance companies just really haven't put much of a focus up on this, on our region. But I, they continue to be available for next year, and they'll continue to be available until we reach that threshold of advantage plan enrollees.
I know they added extra people for screenings and stuff last year for the...
It was crazy.
Yeah, it was nuts last year.
It was absolutely, and we're, I mean, I was working, I stayed, I stayed working. I got hired over on the planning side, actually, in early October, and I said, "I gotta, I can't leave the people over on that side." So I stayed through the end of the year, through the open enrollment period, and it was, it was really challenging because we had, everyone knows, so a portion, the vast majority of Minnesota's 87 counties lost one, one of the types of Medicare insurance plans called a cost plan, available through Blue Cross, Medica, and Health Partners. But we were fortunate in that we didn't have to go through those pains, but we did support, our Linkage Line staff did support all of the other counties, the regions that did lose those plans, and we provided assistance so that they weren't carrying all of the weight.
One other question. The graph that you showed on that Title III that you had, when I added up the numbers, is there some other numbers that go along with that? Because it only adds up to 1.4, and you had 2.4. Is there something else that goes along with that?
Yeah, because what you were seeing there was just the Title III dollars.
Okay.
And so that totaled, that 2.4 was the Title III dollars along with the Live Well at Home, the dementia grant, all of the other grants that we were responsible...
Okay, so I wasn't quite aware just because of the way the graph was shown, so I thought there was other dollars someplace else. So thank you for that clarification. And I have one other question. How do they determine the actual dollars for the seven counties? Is it done on a percentage basis of the number of people that are, because I've never been told that answer even at the Commission level. How do they determine that? Like I saw in the end there, St. Louis County has a whole pile of people over 60 years of age compared to the other counties. How do they determine the dollars that are spread out?
So the money that comes into our region is determined by the 60-plus population for each county. The amount of money that goes back out to each county is dependent on the services and the sites that are available. So if, let's just say, Aiken County Care requests X number of dollars, and they can justify what that's going to be spent on and how many people that will serve. So that, we go through that Advisory Task Force process right now that we're doing right now, which is, there are members from the Advisor Council, Advisor Committee on Aging, who are sitting down and going through, poring through those applications and determining whether, how much goes to each of those organizations. So it's not, it depends on how many partners you have, how many organizations are in a particular county, as far as how much money is going out into that county. Some of the ones, though, that are consistent across the board, I mean, AEOA takes a pretty good chunk with transportation services for the region, as well as the Meals on Wheels and the congregate dining sites that they manage throughout the region. So that covers things regionally rather than by county, and then the rest of it is by county, which organizations are out there and what they make for requests.
Okay, thank you for coming up and sharing with you, because I hear a lot at the Commission meetings for ARDC on this aging, there's usually a presentation almost every meeting, every four months, so.
We try. We want to make sure you remember that we're there.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming. This is the first time I've ever kind of gotten a broad view of all that information, so I appreciate that. The one question that I have is, do you, have you ever gone to the actual clinicians to provide this information for a source of resources for them as they're dealing with their patients medically?
And we're doing, we have, we do outreach, and we do outreach plans. Like our pre-admission screeners right now are going through and doing outreach with all of the hospitals and the skilled nursing facilities throughout the region. We, the Linkage Line staff, like the line specialists, because of the fact that they, you have to be, the line has to be up and running, we have, we each have an area of the region that we're responsible for. So like I was doing, working up here in St., Northern St. Louis County, we have somebody from each of the counties who is making contacts with the clinic systems and things like that. But I, like, when I go and I meet, say, like, the other day I went and met with, when I met with Birch Tree in Duluth, providing mental health services. I'm there, I scheduled the meeting based on the work that I do, but you can sure as heck bet that I'm talking about Senior Linkage Line and talking about the services that they offer, because it's not efficient for me to be going to talk just about what I do. But I'm also talking to them about the Juniper classes. They provide mental health services, they've got space, you know, things like living with chronic conditions and things like that are things that might benefit their clientele as well, so.
I think where I was going with that is, as some of our, especially with Ascensia, in their recruitment process with new physicians coming into our area, it would maybe be a benefit for those new physicians to kind of maybe get a little bit more immersed in some of the tools that you offer. So I would recommend maybe, you know, I don't know how saturated you go into our market here with, you know, St. Luke's Ascensia, Fairview, even up to Net Wake, but I feel like those, you know, the clinicians are the touch point, and the social workers are. So for them to have those tools, I think, would be a very important and vital thing.
And we keep reminding them about ourselves, but that's a good point. We, I mean, we actually do take referrals directly from the clinics and the hospitals. They're able to go on to our site and, you know, obviously with the client's permission, make a referral directly to us. And then we are able to contact the individual or the caregiver, if that's the preferred contact, to work with them, to see what things they might need or where we might be able to help them. And a lot of times, it's just a conversation about how are things? You know, are you, how are things with your meals? Are you, you know, are you, how are things with, you know, taking care of your house? You know, are there things that we, places, ways that we, things that we can guide you
Okay, does anybody else have anything, like, any questions they'd add to Brenda's presentation? Thank you very much. It was very informative, and I keep moving forward with these programs, and we look forward to hearing an update from you in the near future.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much for having me, I appreciate it. And please, don't hesitate to be in contact. Like I said, I'm gonna leave some things here for you guys, and, you know, please, if you have questions, follow up and things like that, or you just have a question about something, you know, in the future, I am an email or a phone call away, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brenda, I really appreciate it. And the next item on the agenda is the recommendation toward the Contract for the Downtown Grant Administrator. And in your packet, I do have a memo from me that came from the last VITA meeting where they approved awarding the contract for the Downtown Development Grant Administrator to CRD LLC, effective December 1st, 2019. Now it's coming forward for your approval.
Okay, so while you're reviewing this, my concern is not the fact that the award is being made to a specific entity, that's, you know, for the Downtown Grant Administrator, but I look at how much money they're ministering and what their service fees are for the administration of that grant, and I know that they are the low bid.
And it was the lowest bid.
They were the lowest bid, and I understand that. And I know that VITA has really vetted this out very well, and usually go by the recommendation of VITA moving forward with, you know, things that are gonna, that fall within their purview. But I still have some, for the lack of a better word, some angst about the percentage that we're paying out of that grant for the being the grant administrator. And I did have a chance to talk to our city administrator about that. This is kind of standard in the industry, this is the lowest that they have, but still, I have a hard time grasping, you know, the fee for the service they're providing. So I defer to other city councils for their concerns, comments, or recommendations. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually do have several questions and maybe points to make. Is there anyone from CRD that was coming today to maybe answer some of our questions?
Anybody in the audience from CRD that could come up and ask, answer some questions? None in the audience, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing with all the noise, but, so, I have a question regarding the actual percentage. Is that, would that be equivalent to an origination, a loan origination fee? And what is the, so if that's equivalent, what is the scope of that work? How does that congeal with the services that we are actually paying through VITA right now with the SBDC, with Betsy Olivanti? Is it a duplication there? Are they gonna be, is it, is CRD gonna be actively in a recruitment phase? I guess there's just a little bit of unknowns of what their scope of work is, what they're doing for that 10% administrative fee, and any loan origination fee that I've worked on or worked with in the past through VITA is a fraction of a percentage. And I also noticed on page seven that they are now then discontinuing the monthly retainer contract with the city in order to do this loan administration. But I'm wondering what they're gonna be doing, and isn't this what Betsy already does?
No, the part of the RFP, and I should have included the RFP in the packet, and I apologize I didn't. The RFP requires that they actively recruit downtown businesses to apply for the program. They walk them through the process of every permit they need, including the Historical Society Review, the City Building Official Review, and any other state mechanical, plumbing, or electrical review. And then they also will ensure that the work was done before, and then they'll recommend a VITA payment of the work, payment of the invoices.
And VITA needs an administrator to do this, because as I recall, 118 Chestnut Street was actually coordinated with our building official, with the VITA Board members, with Counselor Jorgensen, previous Counselor Jorgensen. So I'm just concerned as to what is this scope? I mean, if it's actively recruiting, that might maybe change my perspective a little bit, but is that an equation of a loan origination fee?
No.
So I just feel like that's a very high dollar amount, and for not, I wish the RFP were in there because it doesn't...
If you'd be more comfortable, we can table it. We do have time. We are actively working on setting our date for our Downtown Grants rollout, which will be November 4th. We'll start taking applications.
I mean, I'll let others, I will let others speak, obviously, but...
We should have included the RFP, and I do apologize I didn't put it in there. We definitely can table for more information if that makes everybody...
Yeah, I guess I would just feel more comfortable understanding what their active role is going to be, and then also, what services, are there duplication of their services with the SBDC?
I can answer that question now. No, they're not. What Betsy does is she works with businesses to develop their business plan, beginning of a marketing plan if needed, helps to find resources for funding, connecting them with the Entrepreneur Fund, the local banks, if they are able to apply for an Angel Tax Credit or Hope Credit. Betsy works more on the financial side. This contract deals with the construction side.
Okay, so I guess I'd like to see that information.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, just to clarify, if I may, before we go to Counselor Barabu... And then if, just to clarify, if I may, before we go to Counselor Bearbo, the percentage is 10% of each grant that's being provided?
Correct, up to, up to...
Up to $5,000.
Correct.
So if the grant is for $50,000...
$49,000 is the maximum.
Maximum, so if it's $49,000, their maximum fee is $5,000?
$4,900.
What's that?
$4,900.
$4,900, temporary asset, excuse me, $4,900. So if it's $25,000, it's?
$2,500.
$2,500, so for each successful venture, you get 10% of that, whatever that loan, whatever VITA decides is going to be, the loan that they're going to provide to this entity? Thank you, Britt. Counselor Bearbo.
Well, you answered one of my questions already with that dissertation. I agree with Counselor Paulson that we need to see that RFP, because I haven't seen it either, and I'd like to take a look at it also. So I think we need to table this for...
We had approved it at a previous council meeting, but I should have put it back in the, in this packet, and I apologize I did not.
And I probably filed it away someplace or dumped it, one of the two. Okay, thanks, Britt.
Thank you, Counselor Bearbo. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. So, do we have a target for how many existing businesses versus new businesses? Like, is that, I didn't read the contract, I'll be very honest with you, this week. But is, do we have some goal set for that?
We do. The intent of the program was to renovate at least four, but up to six downtown existing businesses for either code compliance, renovation due to new business, whatever it may be, but it's got to be within the downtown business quarter.
Okay, so one of our businesses that have been in business for 15, 20, 50 years, that's kind of who our target is for this, is to help them become more efficient and maximize their small business?
Correct. And the, I have not officially received any grant applications, but I have heard interest. And what I have heard interest was a lot of roofs, elevators, sprinkler systems, because this is, those are very large ticket items that they have a very hard time funding, and this would be a way to help them get those things renovated.
And then my other question is, when they come to VITA for the grant, do they, can they start at nothing? I know one of the biggest challenges is getting the architectural or the plans done. Does this grant help cover that step?
This grant is available for anything to do with the renovation of the building.
So they can come to us and say, "I want sprinkler systems, but I don't know where to start," and we say, "Great, here's the form, fill it out, we'll help you."
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Okay, it appears as though there's a consensus to maybe table this. If the motion comes to table, would it be, would it be given enough time to table to the next committee of the whole meeting? Okay, okay, very good, thank you. Counselor Bearbo?
Yeah, I'll make that motion at this point to table this till the next committee of the whole meeting. We have enough time, correct, Britt? Okay.
So we can review the RFPs?
Yeah, so that'll give us basically two weeks.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Britt.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the review of proposals for IT managed services. And actually, what we were asked to bring was a breakdown of what the managed services were versus personnel cost. And we actually have one of the people that bid on our original system, Sean from Pantheon here, that wanted to come talk to us a little bit about his company.
Sean, thank you, and welcome to the committee home meeting.
Thank you, and great to be here, I appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Mayor.
And your name for the, for the benefit of the...
Yes, Sean Dollman. I am business development for Pantheon Computers.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to give us a little overview of your services?
Yeah, absolutely. So currently, we have and do advanced services, advanced security services for Virginia PD. We went to bid for the city of Virginia. What I really wanted to do is kind of put a name to the face, because you haven't seen us yet, the PD has, but the rest of you guys haven't, so, hi, I'm here. And then I also wanted to just go over any questions that you have that differentiates our bid from anyone else's, any questions overall that you have just on IT in general, on what we're proposing, any of those things. I just want to be able to help shed a light on some of the things that you may have questions on as you're comparing apples to apples and the companies. I know CompuDyne has been able to be in front of you, so I just wanted my chance to be able to answer questions on our end as well. Being BCA vetted, we have multiple cities within all of Minnesota that are clients of ours. Some of our testimonials from some of our, some of our city clients are on our website. But that gives us an upper hand because we're able to do all aspects. So again, one of the differentiators is we're able to, and already work with the PD. So instead of having to have multiple providers or have to fight between internal and outsourced, we just have that all-in-one solution. With that being said, because we have so many providers and clients within cities, we're able to kind of do that best practices, bring other ideas that other cities are doing that are successful and bring them to the table. We're really a partner, more than anything else. So yes, we're a for-profit company, but we partner with the city. We showed that, really, when we first started this process almost a year ago. Our proposal was completely different than anyone else's. We, and the reason for that is, we were looking at what was most cost-effective according to what we knew knowledge-wise on cities, on that darn budget limitations that you guys face on an everyday basis. I don't know how you do it, but you do it. And we try to figure out how we can help you out the most. And that's that differentiator between that vendor relationship that everyone's used to and that partnership, someone and a company who truly is invested into what you guys are trying to do. And instead of roadblocks, or instead of asking for money, we try to figure out how that works. My hopefully goal after this interaction and after meeting you guys today is, you see that we're able to help make that next step. As you're trying to figure out what to do, as you're looking at budget, as you're trying to figure out how you're even going to make this work this year with everything that you guys have gone through so far in 2019, remember, our goal is to partner with you and figure out what the best solution is. We have ways to help you through that. We work with other cities that have those same budget problems. So if it's something where we can get started now and we can bring things along into 2020 when you have more of a budget, then let's talk about that. We just haven't had that chance to sit down and actually get past stage one. Once we get to stage two, we can sit down and we can figure out what's best for the city, not best for Pantheon Computers, and then figure out how we can partner to make that happen and fulfill that commitment, so.
Thank you, and thanks for coming, we appreciate it very much. I, I do want to make a comment that I have had the opportunity to speak to police department personnel at the, at the administrative level. They're very confident, satisfied with the service that you provide. Being BCA vetted, being my former profession, I think it's very important imperative that you have IT that's available to do that on a regular basis, plus provide IT services as a whole for other communities. I have been able to visit your website and took a look at the testimonials, not making any telephone calls to those people, that's up to our city staff to do that. But I mean, I, just from a personal perspective, I can say that you're, you are a company that's, that has a lot of experience, and I like the fact that you have, you can do the whole, every, all the eggs in the basket, you can do those kinds of things. The question for us over the last year has been, do we hire a full-time IT staff to this, or do we, or do we contract that out? I can tell you that contract for services are beneficial in many ways because you glean all the expertise from other communities, you glean all the expertise from your in-service training and all the updates that you get, that's all part of your company that you offer. So from my perspective, going out for an IT service contract is something that I would support. So moving forward, does any of the councils have any other questions regarding that? Counselor Bearbo?
Yes, Mayor. I totally agree as a counselor that the contracting services going out instead of an in-house employee is more beneficial because you have a greater network of individuals that, and of course, all the other cities that you deal with. We can, we can remember this too, we don't need to put this out for a bid service because it is a professional service, so this...
But we did put it out.
I know we did.
We didn't have to.
I know we did, but we didn't have to. We have not chosen anybody at this point in time, so I like what you've said so far. Britt, do we have more information on this gentleman's company, any place in our repertoire?
Yes, it was, he was one of the original proposers, and he was the one that Chris and I were bringing forward as...
Right, right.
Our ideal, especially because of the factor that they do work at the police department, and they were the only firm that was BCA vetted.
And that's an advantage to us, because if you do multiples, your costs go up all the time when you do multiples.
It does, and it makes it feel a little harder when you're trying to coordinate two different firms with each other.
Yeah, we've, we've been in that predicament before, but if there's things that cross over, one provider is, is a great source, so I appreciate you coming here today. So I'm of the opinion we should contract out.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Sean? Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, we don't, we haven't discussed anything about the fire department, and I know that they have some security needs also. What, how does that play into the bigger picture here?
Yeah, absolutely. So our goal and our proposal included that advanced security services for all the departments. So one of the things that we did that no one else did is, we took the time to see all the sites and visit and talk to everyone. Again, showing that partnership piece over, just, I'll give you a quote and we'll see what happens, and it is what it is. With that being said, yes, we definitely know that there's things in each department that we want to be able to tackle and handle that isn't going to be nickel and dimed outside of what we've already proposed. That proposal, just so all you guys know, includes everything. It includes the extra security services, not just the industry standards like you have now, it includes the things on it for advancement, as we know from hearing cities like Baltimore and Texas, there's just so much going on knocking at our doors. And so we wanted to ensure and show the value in our services by saying, instead of trying to come to council later and say, "Hey, we're going to add umpteen thousand dollars of advanced services on top because now we're talking a whole different thing," that's just not how we operate, and that's not a true partner for you guys. So to answer your question, long answer, answer, yes, that is going to be included in all departments. We're going to make sure that everything's buttoned up from top down because it's on us as much if not more than on the departments themselves.
And I do remember now that, that you had come, and that was one of the comments that I heard from the staff too, is that you had talked to the people who use the system. And so, and I just want to clarify, so that means at 3:00 on Sunday morning, when the server goes down in the PD, that's, that, is that also included in this?
Yes, yeah, it is 24/7, so, yep, we do monitor 24/7, and we do have a call list, we do have automation in terms of answering service after normal business hours, but we have on-call texts, there's five. The fifth one is our owner, and I promise you, it never gets to number five because he's not going to get a call on a Sunday at 3:00.
Okay.
We all like our jobs more than that.
I appreciate that very much, so thank you for coming in today. I guess I would make a motion unless there's another comment somewhere. I, we, okay, could you hold that for a moment, Counselor Johnson?
Before we go to Counselor, before we go to Counselor Paulson, I want to say that, you know, you talked about technology and the importance of evidence and being vetted by the BCA. It's not just the vetting by the BCA, that's, you know, that's the, that's the basic foundation cause and needs that we have. But when you have this new technology where, whether it's public safety, whether it's fire or police, but I'm going to talk to, just for one minute about police, the fact that they have body cameras, the fact that there's body cameras record, and the fact that this recording has to be stored in, in a secured server, and, and those have to be audited and vetted, you know, for public dissemination when, you know, when the legal, when the legal challenges come. And, and so if you don't have that capability as an IT for a BCA-vetted thing, that's all part of that process, it's important that we make sure that we can protect that aspect of it, which is very important. So that BCA-vetted license, so to speak, is very important. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Counselor Paulson?
Thank you very much, it's very nice to see a base to a name.
Thank you.
And I, I do go through our bills to look at IT bills, so...
Perfect.
Yeah, so I guess I have a question then, and most of my concern originally was the fact that we had both your service and CompuDyne's service.
Yes.
And have we, were we ever given the proposal? Have we seen your, your proposed contract at all? Has that been emailed to the councilors?
No, no, because this decision today was, are we going to continue working? Do we want to look at a full-time person, or do we want to look at a managed service?
I think it, it would help to get that information so we can look at what actually is being proposed versus what our, our needs are going forward. And where I'm coming from is, I would love to be able to see one entity service our needs. And I don't know if that was in your proposal, or if that was covered as department heads or you've gone to talk, but we, I haven't had the opportunity to see your proposal, so I apologize if I'm asking redundant questions.
No, not at all. And that is, we were the only ones to come to the table, because we're the only ones that can come to the table and say, "We will protect everything, city, PD, all your entities," because we're the only ones that are vetted to be able to do that.
Okay.
So in that price range that we're all in, ours includes what no one else can assist with.
Sure, with the BCA.
Yep.
And that was very important, I think, as we had our initial, well, our dialogue over the last year on this discussion or on this topic. And I think where I foresee things kind of growing is with our shared public, our public safety and our, our shared fire services, as well as the new miners project. And so what I can foresee is that there are going to be a greater, there will be a greater amount of IT needs, and then will that proposal change during that time as we move forward with the growth in our city?
Right, that's a great question. So it's a conversation, and that's what we do. So you don't just get footed a bill, we have a conversation, we talk about what that next step is, we talk about what that growth looks like, what each department needs, if there's moving buildings, any of these things. As we go through that process, we then talk through what that looks like. Most everything is in our managed service proposal. But like anything else, growth or anything like that always has to be something that may or may not be adjusted, but it's not a guarantee. And we don't go into it saying, anything that happens outside of today, once you sign, is added. That's just not the right way to do business.
And that's where I was getting at, with more of a, an à la carte or by hour, that would increase exponentially if that were the case.
No, don't worry about it, it's unlimited hours. So you have unlimited support through us regardless. So even if there's a new project where we do have a huge upgrade and there may be a project cost to it, there is no change in the managed service piece in terms of how we support you and the hours or anything like that, that's thrown away. You have unlimited support, use us for anything. Printer doesn't work, email doesn't work, it doesn't matter.
Personal services?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate you being here, thanks again.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm going to say, before we go to Counselor Bearbo, I just want to go on the record saying that whatever we decide, we want to decide today if we're going to move forward with looking at managed services or if we're going to have in-house employees. My perspective, my, my personal is that we have a managed IT person because there's so much more benefits from that, an expanded service program, so we won't get into the meat of that, but that's kind of where I look at it from my perspective. Thank you. Counselor Bearbo?
I'm assuming from looking at contracts for all these years that I've looked at them, once you sign an original contract, if we end up with some extra entities within the city because of progression and, and stuff, it would probably go to the next contract period before you would adjust your prices, is that correct?
Well, so...
Unless you have something in the contract where, which could be, you know, those things happen.
No, it would be, we would look at it as, are your manager, your contract would stay the same. So you're absolutely right. After that year, we'd have an annual review and we'd go over that and then talk from there. As far as anything other than that, if we did a big upgrade or did anything in the meantime, we'd consider that a project, if it's big enough to where it'd make a big enough impact in your services or in the, a number of computers or things that we are currently under. If there's something like that, we'll figure out a project cost and figure out something separate. Any normal growth, upgrading a few computers, adding a few computers, things like that, that's not, we're not going to add those in. The other thing too, just so you guys know, is most managed service providers, they're going to try to lock you into a three, five, even seven-year contract. We don't. In fact, only because we're forced to, we have a, in quotations, one-year agreement. At no point in time with Pantheon Computers are you locked into us. We have a performance clause, even currently with the PD, where if we don't show our value, if we're not doing what we said we were going to do when we first started this adventure, then not only are we going to let you go, but we're going to help you find another provider. We don't feel, and the success and the great company's success over the, over 20 years has been because the proof is in the pudding, and our goal is to prove our value, not force you to be stuck with our value even if you don't see it.
Okay, Counselor Bearbo?
If there's somebody else, go ahead. If there's somebody else, go ahead.
No, there isn't yet.
I was just going to, since we've heard this good presentation, I'm going to make a motion that, does Counsel go on record to go and look at managed services for our IT?
A motion by Counselor Johnson to move forward with the investigation, exploration of managed services for our IT for the City of Virginia. Is there support?
I'll support.
I'll support it, but I did not make that motion, Counselor Bearbo.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Supported by Counselor Bearbo.
No, no. Motion by Counselor Bearbo.
Yeah, motion by Counselor Bearbo, supported by Counselor...
Johnson.
Johnson. Yeah, I was ahead of myself because I thought you were going to make that motion only on. So I kept that thought process moving forward. So let's, let's clarify it once again for the 67-year-old mayor. Motion by Counselor Bearbo, supported by Counselor Johnson to move forward with the exploration of IT services for, for a contract service for IT. Is there further discussion?
I have one thing I want to point out.
Please.
The reason why I really like this managed service is that we had gotten an email not too long ago about our, some, a security breach on three of our computers in the PD, and it was a software breach actually. And an email actually said, it's this computer, this computer, you need to fix it now. And I'm like, I sent it to Chris. I'm like, we've never ever gotten an email like that saying, these three computers need you right now. It was amazing, and I really appreciate you guys doing that, Sean. Thank you very much. Thank your team for sending that email out.
At least we can do.
Okay, thank you. So it's moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Bearbo?
Yeah, you said contract services, managed services.
Managed, managed services.
Because that was my motion.
Please read that motion for all of us, so we make sure we have it correct. Yeah, thank you.
So I have moved by Counselor Bearbo, supported by Counselor Johnson, to move forward with the managed IT services for the City of Virginia.
Is that correct? Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
I actually do have one more just addendum regarding like a boots-on-the-ground. As we go, go forward, you know, in our growth, you know, do you do the, do you actually set up, do the computer networking? You guys come here to do that physically. And would there be any benefit or any need that you could foresee the city actually needing a person employed by the city to help facilitate this? Or are you covering it A to Z?
We do have that, actually. And I think that's part of Sean, not to diminish Sean, that's part of your proposal, is that you would use Chris and Deb as we have them to assist.
So they would have maybe further training from your, your company going forward?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. That, that makes me feel, I just wanted to kind of look forward in our planning as we have different needs. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Staff has been very vocal, asking where do I fit in? And we've assured them that with Pantheon, that they'd have a spot, and we need them to stay where they're at and use them.
You know, I, I think personally, I'm ready to move forward now, but I think we need to see the documentation. We need to see, we need, we need to see the contracts. So thank you very much. Okay, moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Sean, for traveling up here. Appreciate it. Thanks. One more, and then I got to go.
Okay, take one more proposal, and then we take a short break. Thank you.
The next item is review the proposal from SEH for zoning and planning ordinance update. This comes from the request from not just Counselor Bearbo about the zoning ordinance, but also from the Planning and Zoning Commission. They've been asking for the last couple of years to have the ability to redo the zoning ordinance, which is Chapter 11, and then it touches a little bit in Chapter 4 and Chapter 12 of the City Code.
Once again, good morning, Matt.
Good morning. Yeah, this actually, we just dusted this proposal off. This is the one that we provided, I think, almost a year ago now. The only thing that we really changed on it was the dates, and we hacked a few things out based on the request of the, of the city administrator. So I can answer any, oh, full disclosure, this is the one that Bob Coste, you remember, he helped do the comprehensive plan for the city. Bob, I found out recently, is going to be transitioning his way into retirement. However, he is around for a while and intends to be involved in this process and sharing his knowledge and past experience working with the city with someone that will eventually take over for him. But I wanted to just be clear on that so everybody understood that going into this. But I can answer, try to answer any other questions you might have related to the proposal.
I would like to point out, your proposal is a maximum dollar amount of $20,500. It's an hourly contract, so we would be paying per hour up to an amount not to exceed $20,500.
That is correct.
How long did we estimate for this, Matt? This was going to take a while. This was going to be...
Oh, boy. Did he have that in here?
I don't know that we had the timeline in here.
Three to four months to complete all of the tasks listed within. It's a timely process by the time you get the public meetings and everything in there.
Counselor Bearbo?
Counselor Bearbo, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Matt, this includes taking a look if we're going to change these zoning to zoning of rental properties and stuff to zone them in a specific area of the community. Is that going to be part of this? Because that's one of my main concerns on this rezoning.
It should be, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you coming in, and it's timely because I just got an email from a citizen asking about, are we going to be reviewing the comprehensive plan, or is there a committee that will be reviewing the comprehensive plan anytime soon? So I guess I would like to see that be part of this. And as, as we're going through this process, if we could hold a meeting or two, advertise public meeting for, as part of the review of going back to the book that we have, and, and making sure that we are sticking to that comprehensive plan and seeing what needs to be adjusted. That was one of the concerns as we were going through the process, was sure, we're going to spend all this money on this comprehensive plan, and now it's going to sit on a shelf again like the other ones. And so I would really like to see us make sure that at least yearly we have a comprehensive plan review meeting and get those set up. I don't know when it's best for you, Britt, or the staff.
And I would like to point out that the zoning ordinance change was one of the recommendations from the comprehensive plan. So that was why we brought it forward a year ago, is that we wanted to keep that momentum up. And the importance of why the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted Bob Coste was because he wrote the comprehensive plan with us. And so they wanted to keep going with that momentum.
And we, yeah, we do have that, we do have that relationship with him, and he was here, and he, he understands the city, and he understands what our challenges were. So being on that bus with him and taking those tours with him was super beneficial. So I think this is a great idea. I really appreciate the time and effort. And quite honestly, a $20,000 bill is nothing compared to as we're moving forward, what we want to be doing with the city. So I will move that we move forward with this contract with SEH.
Okay, moved by Counselor Johnson to move forward with the contract from SEH regarding zoning ordinance issues. Is there support?
I will support, Bear.
Support by Counselor Bearbo. Is there any further discussion? I got that right that time. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Matt, Matt, can you, are you going to stick around for the street and alley? Okay.
Let's, let's just take five minutes. And I know that our city administrator has a conference call with the MPCA at 10:30, so we'll move on after, after, after the break. Just take five minutes, please. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We took a little break, a commercial break. So now we're back on live, so we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Britt?
Thank you. Review and prioritize the 2021-2023 Street and Infrastructure Improvement Project List. The list is in your packet. This is coming from the Street and Alley Meeting that was held last week. I'll turn it over to Charlie, our chairperson.
Yeah, I'll just go through what we've done. If you've noticed, there's going to be three items here, five, six, and seven. Number five is a list that you, most of you have probably seen already. It's a list that the city, people between Ed, myself, Bill Hennes, and have gone around, and Matt have gone around the city to look. What we want you to do as counselors, take a look at that list and come back. What do we want to give them, a week, Britt, or two weeks to, pardon?
I would think two weeks, the next committee, the whole meeting.
Yeah, next committee, the whole meeting. We'd like each counselor to prioritize that list. Although we've decided at the committee that the number one, I believe, is Southern Drive. That's our number one item. Other than that, we'd like you to prioritize, and we'll tabulate that, to see where we go next with our street projects. So that's just for informational purposes, number five. Want to go through the, through the rest, or shall I go, Britt?
You go right ahead, Charlie.
Okay, number six is a proposal from the committee at Level. It was, a motion was made to remove the resident parking only signage on 17th Street and send to the council for further review. I've been down that street at least three times a week, because I end up in the grocery store. And if I see one car on 17th Street where those resident-only parking are, we're lucky to see it. There's nothing there all day yesterday, because I went by there twice. I think we take those signs, remove them, and let the residents come back and scream and holler, because we said we were going to review it. We told them that when we put that into, into operation, what, a year and a half ago now? So that is a recommendation from the committee. We'll probably have to notify the residents again. I would imagine that we're going to remove those signs first before we actually do a final notification. So I don't know, Britt, do we think we need another hearing on this, or just make the motion?
I don't think we need a hearing, Bill, do we? We should notify them.
Chairman Bearbo, for me, I'd like to see us notify all those residents, send them a letter out saying that this is the recommendation from Street and Alley, and that we, and the council is going to consider this, maybe invite anybody who has a concern to come to the committee meeting, express their concerns. I think they have a right to do that. They did it before when we put the signage up. So I think that we have, they really should come, from my perspective, and let us give us some feedback. Maybe we'll get anybody, maybe we'll get the whole group and get a perspective from them, and then, and then we can make a decision on them. The recommendation from Street and Alley is based with solid information and solid considerations by the committee, by our city engineer, and by our public works director. So, but I think, you know, they should have a right to come and, and, you know, express their views before you make a vote.
That's fine with me as chairman of the committee. Is there any other counselors to have some thoughts? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. I agree with removing those signs, but I guess I'd also like to see the signs removed from the end of Chestnut Street also. The, we, our residents, you know, you can drive down there at any time, and there aren't a whole lot of cars parked on the end of Chestnut Street either. And, you know, it's one of those things that what are we using the streets for? So I'm supportive of getting rid of the signs over by Super One, but also on the end of Chestnut Street. And if that needs to be a discussion we have later, I'm fine with that. I do know that the resident-only signs next to the school are well-used, and that is, that's only going to be a problem for another two years. And then at some point, I'm guessing those will go away. Are there any other places in town where we have resident-only parking?
I don't believe...
Yes, we do.
We do. But Steve, one of the things we don't have on this list that we discussed, I know you were missing, you had a very important...
Yes, I had an addition, yes.
Yes. So we did show a map of the downtown, the parking and everything, and we're going back as a committee to review that. I don't know whether you got your information packet or not for that meeting. If not, we'll get Pam to provide you that. But there was a total map of the downtown area. We're going to review that whole parking area, but we're going to wait until all this construction is done first, so we can come up with a valid plan with the help of engineering and with, with Ed and the rest of the council on that. So that was put on hold right now.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Johnson. Councillor Bearbo, please continue.
Yeah, I guess that is a good option that the mayor had, so I would entertain a motion to send a letter to each of the residents for discussion, maybe in what, how long will that take, Pam, to get out to the residents? Or Bill? Would it take more than a couple weeks?
Next committee of the whole meeting?
Next committee of the whole meeting?
Yeah, next, November 5th would be the next committee of the whole meeting, Councillor Bearbo?
No, that's fine. It was me.
I'd make a motion that we notify residents along Seventeenth Street that those signs will be coming out. And if they have comments, they can reach out to the city or attend the next committee of the whole meeting.
And this comes as a recommendation from Street and Alley?
From Street and Alley.
And they'll come to this meeting, and then the council will decide, make a decision based on the recommendations moving forward.
I'll support that, Mayor.
Moved by Councillor Johnson and supported by Councillor Barnzeli. Get that? What's that?
No, no, I didn't make the motion.
Motion by Councillor Johnson, supported by Councillor Barnzeli, and approved by Chairman Bearbo. Councillor Barnzeli, you have a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. How long has Super One been in business? Three years, four years?
The liquor store you're talking about?
Pardon?
Liquor store?
The restaurant, where we're on Seventeenth Street.
Well, the liquor store's been there a couple of years, but Super One's been there since the mid-eighties.
Eighties?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the General School Market before, General's before that, and then...
Well, before we put the signs up, I didn't see a problem, like Councillor Bearbo says. You have to walk across Seventeenth Street to get into the store. That parking lot is big enough that they can, I don't see a problem with them signs being removed. Thank you.
Yeah, the impetus for that was, in the summertime, the boats, motors, and trailers, they can get into the parking lot in and out of there, so they park on Seventeenth Street, but just there temporarily. And so they weren't there for the long term. And I think the city, if we look back on the motion, it was to put some temporary signs up there to see what is going on. And then, of course, we put, you know, more permanent signs instead of the stick ones, and make it more readable, just to review, to determine if this is something that's going to work. We've gave it that review process, and now we're making a rather recommendation.
That's absolutely correct, Mayor. That's what we did. The original was on a review basis when we put those signs in. So this is now going to be the review process.
Yeah, and once we make a decision, whether we're the other, you know, like you said, like, there's no going back now.
No.
Okay, all right. That's moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
The last item is item, no, we actually have another item that we put in there. We put in a timeline, if you've noticed, project schedules for these upcoming different things. This is a general timeline. I'm going to let Matt explain that timeline.
Matt Reed, our engineer of record through SCH, once again, good morning.
We asked Matt and our bond council to put together some of this timeline, so.
Very good, thank you.
And this is for informational purposes, so the council can look at this.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Bearbo. Matt?
Good morning again. The project schedule that's attached is, as Councillor Bearbo was suggesting, the, this is for the 2021-2023 Street and Infrastructure Products, so we're backing up a little bit, back to item number five. But I can go through this, and I started out fairly detailed, just to kind of lay it out, so people could understand that, how this really would impact moving forward if we started today, is the date I started with. So you can, you can read through all of those different things. There's public meetings, and if you're going to do special assessments, there's a Chapter 429 process that has to be followed. Some of those steps are included in here. You've also got state aid money you're going to use, so there'll be the step of having state aid review plans, things like that. Those are in here as well. And this just lays out what, there's the first bit of phases, or the first bit of tasks to get done that would encompass the project as a whole. And then, once the council decides what you want to move forward with on, for the overall project, and we determine what would go into phase one, what would go into phase two. And based on George Ellerton's recommendation, doing a two-phase from a financial perspective for the city, doing it in two phases, probably for a sanity perspective as well, for the city to do it in two phases. We wouldn't be able to get all this work done in one summer, anyway. So then, once I go farther along, I don't know if your copies are in color or not, but I did try to highlight in blue what the steps of phase one would be in the green.
They're in color on our computer screens.
And so then the steps in green would be phase two. So it just, it starts with the approvals, and the meetings, and the bidding, and the construction, and it walks through all those steps. So I can elaborate any more that you'd like, Councillor Bearbo, or anybody else, but that's generally what it is. This will obviously change now if we don't, if we're going for another two weeks, but that's okay. This is easy to fix.
You know, and as we move forward with this, more information will come out. The public will be well-informed. We'll have the informational hearings and notifications, and people who can't come to the meeting will make sure that the information is disseminated for the public. Copies will be made available. So this is, we're just in the embryonic stages now. Through your committee, Chairman Bearbo is trying to figure this out, and moving forward with items five, six, and seven. So we look forward to the more work by the Street and Alley Committee moving forward, working with our Public Works Director, Engineering Department, and our engineer of record.
Yeah, this timeline is subject to changes as we move forward. We've worked with these before. Ed has been involved with streets, and so has Bill. We're just putting together a general timeline. So this is all subject to change as we move forward through the process of the bonding and everything else for these projects. We're not looking to start until 2021, correct?
Construction.
Construction. So, but there'll be a lot of stuff beforehand. You'll see all kinds of meeting things from Matt, informational things, because we have to do hearings on all this. He'll do a general, word is skipping me.
The feasibility study?
Feasibility study. We'll do a big general one, and then as each project comes up, we'll have a separate individual feasibility for each project. I believe that's correct, Bill?
The way it's set up right now, Councillor Bearbo, is we would have a feasibility report done for the entire encompassing project.
That's right.
And then you'd pick and choose out of that what you'd like. You want to make sure you get it all in in one, so that you're meeting the intent of the statute.
And one of the reasons we have to do this ahead of time, Public Utilities Department has to be involved at least a year in advance for their share of costs if we do a total reconstruction of the street. So we don't want to bankrupt the public utilities. We've always brought that in the past when we did big street projects, a year in advance to utilities, so they would know what their cost would be. That's another important part of this. We don't want to leave them out in no man's land.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions? And then it's Steve.
Thank you. I guess my question goes back to five, with all the background noise. Is it my understanding that you are asking for all of us to look at that list of?
Thirteen, I think, or twelve?
There's twelve. Can we, can we put that out on maybe social media and ask our residents to comment and weigh in on that as a direct feedback from them? I know we can do it, but I'm just looking to the council, if we could create that list and just ask folks what they would say, just to get some direct, at least, input. Because we're only, we only talk to the people who talk to us. I mean, I can't see any of us walking around to get, going door-to-door, because everybody who lives on that street is going to say, yes, I want my street fixed. So maybe just getting, oh, I can fix it.
No, I got mine on.
Well, I think, Councillor Johnson, we could, we could do that, just.
I shut everybody off. Sorry about that.
Yeah, if people want to comment, I think it's important to do so. They're going to have questions like they do for me, and you, and else. Well, how can we not fix in this street? How can we not fix, well, repartori is this? Well, why is that? They need to know why. And so if they can ask those questions during this process, the committee within our staff can certainly answer those questions. I think it's important that they get as much information as they can.
We can put that, just that list on, as a Facebook post, and just say, if you have any comments, contact us or send an email. I think that would be, just so it's out there, because this list is hard to read here, so we just put the list of the streets and maybe just see what kind of feedback we get. It would be an open process, and it doesn't mean the most votes wins, because obviously, we're going to be looking at the other realms with utilities, and usage, and deterioration. But, you know, I think we might be surprised at citizens who are using the streets, what streets they may want done, as opposed to what we think they might want done.
And we could debate those questions before it gets to the public process, so we could mitigate that.
We can have answers at the public meeting, absolutely.
You bet. Thank you, Councillor Johnson. We could certainly do that. Doesn't need a motion to do so.
No, it doesn't need a motion. I don't have a problem with that. Bill, do you have a problem with that, or anybody? Ed? Okay. No, so we can, we can certainly do that.
Very good.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I should have put that with number five, and I got lost in my own presentation here.
Well, I think your committee's worked. You know, this is the purpose of the committee, to work through these major issues, street and alley. You'll continue to do that as a committee, continue to work with our staff in order to accomplish that, and then keep us all informed as the direction moving forward. So I think it's a good process.
Yeah, and I appreciate what Matt and George Ellerton did. And I don't know, Bill, were you involved in that timeline at all? So, did you, do you want to be involved in the future on that? We probably should have had you in there. We didn't. So we'll make sure that you're involved from here on out. Okay? And I apologize for that. Okay, the last item then is, we've had some complaints from individuals on this deconstruction about the parking and stuff on the 100 block of Third Avenue South during this deconstruction. It's been basically people parking too long in that zone, but I think we can take care of that with our monitoring person if they're, if they're sitting there too long. I've been by there just out of curiosity to look at the deconstruction. I haven't seen an issue. And I was talking with Councillor Paulson this morning. We haven't really seen a problem with truck parking on Chestnut Street yet either. Or we had a, one issue on 100 block for a little bit of time when a truck was there, and people just had to go around it, but it didn't seem to be a problem, because I ended up in that same situation where I go around the truck. But I haven't really seen a problem.
Well, I think, again, sometimes, the reason some of those trucks are being mitigated off the main streets, because they're using the one-way street, going right down the alley behind Grand East Hour, coming in, and then turning onto Third Avenue, and parking there, and unloading and making the deliveries on the main street on that avenue, and then vacating. They're not there very long. So it is mitigating some of the parking on the main street moving forward. And we did make some adjustments to some of the people who normally park in the alley, like the flower delivery services, and those kind of things, where they can park in front because they're transient moving forward. I think it's been working well so far. And I don't see, I'm at the Tini Square Building every morning for coffee, and fifteen, twenty people go there. Sometimes, sometimes it's only six. I talked to some of the people there. They don't have any issues. I know that the county employees are parking there all day long, but there's two-hour parking there. So, I mean, our parking monitor has been moving with that, and citations have been issued. And I think he's controlling that, the police department's controlling that fairly well. Just FYI, a mic from what I, my observations.
We can, I think, right now, we'll just leave it alone. Bill has done a good job. I know some letters, information went out. I saw that in emails. So I think it's, people have been notified. And of course, they can go around on Chestnut Street to the right if they come down Third Avenue and park. There's usually plenty of parking across from the American Legion early in the day, so.
If we see, if we get concerns on the part of business owners downtown that's negating their visibility for their patrons to park there, or in access, and all, we, you know, we should, we certainly will hear from them, and try to make an adjustments to make sure that their business is inadvertently affected in the long term.
Okay. Other than that?
I think Councillor Paulson has a question for you.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't see your light.
This is, it is a little off-topic, so if you want to finish, but it's still under Streets and Alley's.
No, I'm done with that. Okay.
The other items of concern under Street and Alley, Councillor Paulson.
One other little concern. Is the, and this might be Matt, to bring in to Matt, with Matt, you know what I'm trying to say. On its eighth street by the F and D meets by the Lutheran Church there, are those, is that going to be permanent, the way that they have those new lines and the new directionals running that way? Is it, is it?
It's a street.
It works, it works good.
Yeah, it's, it's a.
It works very well.
Reason it's permanent, that's a stated street, and they have some input into how those.
Statutory requirements for state aid money.
For a city where there's state aid.
How to control traffic lanes.
That is going to be the permanent way that that street functions?
It's working good, as far as I'm concerned.
I think it's working really good. I did just have a couple of questions on that, so I just wanted to ask that publicly, and so the kids now can learn the new way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Paulson.
And Ed and his crew, I believe, have taken care of the parking by the nursing home there, correct? So that's been taken care of, so we don't have that accident waiting to happen.
And you, and you have another Street and Alley Committee meeting set, or you're going to set one in the near future?
No, we'll set one. We don't have, right now, we want all this digestion done by the council first.
We'll give, we'll give input to you.
It'll be over, it'll be more than two weeks, so we're going to go to the next committee of the whole.
Very good. Thank you, Councillor Bearbo.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for Street and Alley before we move to the next topic? Okay, seeing none, Britt has that conference call. Thank God, I don't have to sit on that. And this is the MPECA issue that we're trying to work through. We'll move to item eight under building and grounds. Discuss options to purchase the tax forfeit land at 219 Chestnut Street. That is the vacant lot that's next door to the American Legion and the VFW there. You know, the history of that is that, I think it was valued at, you know, first it was like $16,000, and then $5,000, and then somebody bought it, and the individual purchased it, passed away, and went tax forfeited. So make a long story short, our city administrator did contact the county, saying we were interested in that parcel, and we use it as we need to, and we'd like to be able to control that moving forward. So as part of that process, the county has set the, a price of $500 on that property. So we did offer it at one time to the VFW, that we would purchase it from, this was years ago, and then they would pay us back. But it was a significant amount of money. They didn't have the money for that. So now it's $500, and this, that's, that we can purchase it from, if the council decides to do so, from the county for the, for $500, and then we can use it for, we can control what those uses are. So, anybody have any questions or comments? Councillor Johnson?
I think purchasing that lot at $500 is good. I think having that control, not knowing what the future brings, and then utilizing it for the parking as a, as an in-kind service to a nonprofit, I think is a good idea. So I would move that we purchase the lot for $500, probably, plus some fees from St. Louis County.
Thank you. A move by Councillor Johnson to approve the purchase of that vacant lot under the parcel code for $500 from St. Louis County. Is there support, support by Councillor Freely? Is there any further discussion? Councillor Barnzeli?
Thank you, Mayor. When they have the cruise night and the car show on Saturday, the VFW has their kitchen there, and they, people, a lot of people in there. That thing is full, that vacant lot. So I think it's a good deal.
It could be used for multi-purposes. We have these celebrations, people can set up there.
Yep.
Sell their wares, you know, those kind of things. So I think it's a, I'm glad we're purchasing it. Councillor Biondich?
So you don't know what that property would be used for yet?
No, the city will determine that.
Okay, the city will plow, maintain, cut the grass, pull the weeds?
Well, there is no grass. It's all, but yes, we will have to maintain that. It's all rotten rock now. It's all gravel.
Okay.
At this point in time.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, move to item, other item of concern, item number nine, review the Business Fire Occupancy Ordinance Amendment and the Business Fire Application. We did review it last time. Is this the second review of this process moving forward? It was moved to bring it back to the committee for some additional discussion. You have it in your packet, I believe. I think it's a, it's just another step moving forward in addition to the Property Maintenance Preservation Code, as we gravitate toward the vacant building, the occupancy issues, the fire application, and eventually get to our rental code ordinance as well. So I think, I guess I'm looking for some comments and questions or motions from the council.
Like I mentioned, to fire chief or fire marshal. Like I mentioned to fire chief or fire marshal Clark, I mean, I understand the rationale and I think it's important to have these kinds of standards established within the city. Given the age of so many of the buildings that will be inspected, especially in the downtown corridor, I do have concerns that, you know, I wonder if there's any grandfathering in that could be considered within this proposal. My concern is it's going to be cost prohibitive to a number of business owners to upgrade their businesses to meet the standards of this new ordinance that requires them to have this occupancy certification. So I think I'd like to see something coupled in the city where we would be able to afford them assistance in some fashion. I don't know if it's through VITA or other resources that could be available to business owners to assist them in making those improvements upon the inspection stating that they would have to do so. That's my biggest concern, is that we want to make the city business-friendly rather than put ordinances in place that create obstacles for people to either continue their business or maintain their business. So I do think that this is something that's necessary, but again, I just think the way that we go about enforcing it, encouraging it, is going to be critical to the success of it and to the continued success of our downtown corridor for that matter. So that's just where I stand with that. I've talked about it before, that there's concerns with regard to any kinds of improvements that need to be made within this city. If you can't do them yourself, it's a lot of money that you have to pay for contractors to be able to get that stuff done. And there's a lot of people in town that are struggling to be able to find those resources to do that and particularly in the business corridor, I think. So enough said.
Thank you. And I think, I hopefully think we all share that concern about how you move forward with that and our ability to communicate with the business owners to try to help facilitate and help them upgrade that. It's nice about the downtown business corridor that there are grants that are available. I think if I understood Fire Marshal Clark's perspective is that they're going to meet with these business owners, give them some advice on how they need to move forward, what they need to do, and help facilitate a way to get there without having, you know, significant costs associated with that. So doing that over time, as far as your comment about grandfathering people in any new construction, not an issue because, you know, they have to meet certain codes. But here, now this ordinance is part of the fire code, part of a property maintenance preservation code, will likely be part of the rental code when we move forward. And so we do have to look at those businesses, particularly those that need those upgrades. And I think enforcement would should be the last resort unless there's non-compliance. I mean, and I agree, I think we have to move forward with that. Be careful how we do that. But I agree with you, it is necessary to do. And it's how we go about, I think it's important. I agree. Council Bearbo.
Yeah, Council Freedley, there is one other thing that we're already tied into that we don't have any choice over. That's the building code that we've adopted through the state of Minnesota. And if a building is unoccupied and empty for over a year, those code things have to be brought up to date. We don't have a choice on that. So, but people, if they're occupying already, the main concern is safety and health, especially if there's residents in those buildings. And I believe that's what Fire Marshal Clark was talking about. But as far as actually forcing people to upgrade, if they're actually occupying a building right now, no, unless it is a safety hazard, that's the main concern that the fire chief has. And they've already addressed some of those issues with businesses and they've worked out some equitable solutions on that. But if it's empty and then they go to sell it and a new person wants to open a visit, yeah, they have to understate building codes, bring it up to code. So that's an issue we don't have control over. So I just wanted to let you know that because we've gone through that with our building inspectors before.
Yeah, thank you, Council Bearbo. Council Beyondich.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to volunteer, to have my building inspected by the fire marshal only to set a precedence for other people to not be afraid to have that done. He came in, I couldn't walk with him through the building. I let him go with his clipboard. He came back to me and the improvements that needed to be made were as simple as putting a new switch cover on. The extension cords I was using were not up to standard of what I was plugging into them. So it, for me, it was helpful to have those, have his input on what needed to be done to keep the building safe. And I just want to tell people, it's not a bad experience to have your fire marshal come in and tell you what you can do to improve your building. I didn't need a sprinkler system. I mean, the big cost things and VITA touched on it. Those are areas that there is help. If you really need something done with your building, there is help out there for you. But I just want people to know, don't be afraid to invite them in before it's too late and there's a tragedy. Let them come in, let them look at your building, and they are more than happy to work with you on cost-saving measures on the things that can and should be repaired just for the safety of not only the building owner, but the employees and the people that are in that space. So I was very happy having our building, and I told them, you can use me for an example. Come in, walk through it, tell me what I need to do. So anybody out there listening, please don't be afraid to have them come in and help you through that process. There is help out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Beyondich. Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I understand where you're coming from, Council Freedley. And I agree, I don't like a lot of cumbersome regulations. Sorry, I'm just scrolling through. I have one question on here. But upon reviewing the whole entire ordinance and regarding the certificates of occupancy, I feel like it is very important to have our downtown business district be up to code in those areas. And again, you know, I had my building semi-inspected and there weren't major issues. But if in the event that there is our buildings out there that would have some of those major issues that I think Council Freedley is maybe alluding to where it's just very cost prohibitive for the business owner to take that on, I would like to see what resources that we have as a city, either through VITA or, you know, I don't know what our fire marshal, Chris Clark, is, I don't know what those fire grants look like. And I recently visited a couple of different departments in outlined communities and they had free carbon monoxide detectors and free smoke alarms. So maybe even things like that, that we could get together that might just sound a little bit burdensome to have to run and get those things. Maybe something like that, if we could get a grant through, you know, VITA administer that or maybe the fire department already has that and I'm not aware of it, but to make it a little less scary. And when you look at the annual fee for inspection, it's the amount of square foot of the building times .005. So if your building is approximately 2,500 square feet, it's $12.50 for that annual inspection, which I don't feel is very cumbersome at all to actually have that up to code. The other thing is with electrical, if there's electrical, I think we need to give some options for those that, you know, I know they need a contractor to do those things, but I also know if you have the contractor come in, the electrical contractor come in, tell you what you need to do and you do all the conduit yourself and the end result, the electrical contractor comes in to inspect and then actually connects your service. That is also legitimate. So I would like to maybe, you know, like how he had a clipboard and he came in and did, you know, the little checklist. Maybe we need to make a checklist of things that are okay and other things that are not okay and some financial resources or grant resources and put that together. And I don't know if that would be a CRD thing as they're administering, you know, and looking for recruiting business or building owners to renovate. But I think if we have all of our ducks in a row, it's going to be a lot less scary and it'll make people excited that there's some resources and some energy behind revitalizing the downtown corridor.
Yes, thank you, Council Paulson. There are programs available. Red Cross has programs for smoke detectors. I know we've had those in the past where we were able to get some from these different organizations for specific purposes. And I think we have a code and I think Bill Cole has, for those who want a building permits, for example, has a checklist already. That checklist or portion that could be applied to the incidents in which you're, the examples you're referring to as well. So I think we should have staff do that. I think that's your recommendation for that to be done. Okay, sounds good. Okay, anybody else before we move to the next item? Council Barneselli.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilors, I think we have one of the best fire departments. Chris Clark is excellent at what he does. I don't think he's picking on any of our store owners. I think he's trying to make our main street safe for the existing buildings that are there. There was a few years ago where Council Bearbo, didn't they go door-to-door? Fire marshal back probably in the early 90s and, and can't they get funding from VITA?
Well, there are a variety of sources that are available.
Available, yeah.
Applying for VITA grants is one of them, for downtown business improvements, that's one option. I think there are other options that Council Beyondich and Council Johnson and Council Paulson and while actually all of us have alluded to, to make it easier and help businesses move forward with compliance in order to make it a better, a healthier and a safer place for them to operate, you know, without having significant burden on their financial abilities to make those improvements.
I agree with that. I think that's a good plan. We try to keep our main street in one piece. And a lot of those buildings have a common wall. So, well, thank you.
Thank you. So I think we're looking for a motion, I think, to move forward with this. Council Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, when I was running a small nonprofit childcare center, had Chris Clark come through and it was the exact same thing, a list of suggestions, some of them as simple as you really can't have anything in front of your electrical panel. Maybe you want to put some duct tape on the floor so that your staff don't put the mop bucket in front of it. So, and Chris came through the Lyric Center too with some suggestions. This isn't, we're here to shut you down. Our fire department, as Council Barneselli said, is really about public safety. So the concerns are real, the challenges are real for downtown businesses. And I think that we do have some great, some great projects set up. And I think that the other thing the staff, our business owners need to be doing is calling City Hall and talking to Britt and asking her for help. She has some very creative solutions. She has much more information than all of us because that's her job. It's her full-time job is to know where that stuff is. And so to give her a call, send her an email and say, I need some help, what do you suggest? That is truly what I tell people when they ask me those questions. I refer them to Britt because she does know what she's doing and she knows those resources. And with that, I would move that we send this back to the council meeting for the second reading of the ordinance.
Moved by Council Johnson to move forward to the next council meeting for the second reading for the approval of the Business Occupancy Ordinance Amendment. Is there support?
Support.
Did we actually have the first reading? I don't believe we did.
Further discussion? Yes.
Did we actually have the first reading?
Yep, we brought it back here to the committee of the hall.
So that was counted as the first reading. Okay, I would challenge that if I were a citizen because.
Well, you can challenge it now if you like.
No, because I thought we were coming back with the, once we read all this for more information and we didn't actually approve it for the first reading. What did we actually do, Pam? I don't remember from the minutes. Yeah, we didn't actually, so this would be the first reading, man.
Well, we read it first, then we brought it back for some changes, and now we're going back again. So.
Still be the first reading when you make changes. That's my interpretation from talking to Budarak. If we made any changes, wasn't any, okay, then we can probably skate by.
Did you want to?
No, no, that's all right. I just don't want us to get into a situation where it doesn't become a valid ordinance because we haven't officially done it.
Council Johnson.
Thank you. My recognition is that we had this, both of them were on for a first reading. We did both first readings. They came back for the second reading. The second reading, this portion wasn't included in our packet and we wanted to review it.
Oh, okay.
So we've already had the first meeting.
That's right.
Reading several meetings ago, so this would be referral back for the second.
You're correct, Council.
Thank you.
Can I make one other comment, Mayor?
Yeah, please, Council Bearbo.
I think this is a very pertinent thing to do. It not only protects individuals, it protects the businesses also. You got to think about it that way. In case something accidental were to happen, if you had the fire chief go through and make these recommendations, you've got a legal leg to stand if somebody gets injured in your particular facility. So I think this is a great step forward.
Thank you. And one quick comment, they came through the Alx Club, he made some suggestions, we made those adjustments. We had the insurance agent come over there. Our insurance got reduced as a result of it, so it's effective. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. It'll move up to the next council meeting for a second reading approval. Okay, another item of concern, item number 10, is discuss the federal opioid litigation involving cities. Because you know, the cities across the United States are joining in with their support for federal litigation regarding the opioids, not only from the manufacturer's perspective, but from the distribution perspective as well. They are hearing this at the state level where there's a bill introduced to hold not only the manufacturers accountable, and you can see the opioid statistics with respect to the state of Minnesota and how high, what a higher rate than most states in prescribing these medications. And so we have an issue at the state level where these opioid litigation is to hold not only the manufacturers accountable, but the distributors as well. And I had the opportunity to sit down at one of those hearings last legislative session where the distribution lobby fought hard at committee level to exclude the distribution from the lawsuit that the state is looking for, the bill that they're looking to introduce because they're just a middle person making the distribution. They're not producing it and they're not prescribing it. So, but at that committee level, remember, there was a vote taken and I don't know where that's gone. I don't think it's a bill yet, but I think it's going to be this next legislative session to hold them accountable. So they're working at the state level for this. And so I look for comments from the city councils with respect to our, at our level. Council Johnson.
Has Attorney Budarak or the administrator weighed in on which way they want us to go with this?
I am not aware of that. I think we are looking for some additional information from our city administrator. Unfortunately, she's on that conference call. So, I mean, I don't think it's imperative that we could maybe table this and from more additional information. Council Johnson?
Yeah, it looks like we have until November 22nd to act on this.
We do, we do.
Before you table it, can we?
Yeah, no, that's, I would, I don't want to table it until everybody has a chance.
From a retired professional in the pharmacy business, we look forward to your comments, Council Bearbo.
One of the things that I'm concerned about in this particular federal legislative portion, they're trying to hold the manufacturers of the opioids accountable for suspicious orders on prescription drugs. They never see those orders. So how can you make them accountable for suspicious orders? That's up to the doctors in the pharmaceutical industry because they don't have access to how prescriptions are prescribed. And I have a problem with that language in that particular thing. State of Minnesota has a program that every opioid or narcotic prescription is sent to the state screening process on the computers, but there is a falsehood there because it takes up to 48 hours for them to catch up to find out where a person might have got multiple places for either selling or using or whatever, where they can make copies and get them filled. And they never show up. And they could change names and everything with all these new things. So I have, I'd like to have an opinion from Budarak and some of these others because of that one statement in there and see what the state is going to do because we don't want to opt out if we shouldn't opt out or we do if we want, if we should. But then we become our own individual. Basically, if we stay in, we have to take settlements. Opt out, then we're involved with this with our own lawsuit. What kind of money is that going to cost the city? You know, you got to look at that perspective. You know, you got to look at that perspective too, so I'd like to hear a little more information. So now if you want to table it...
Anybody else have a comment they have to make before we look for the next move? Seeing none, does anyone want to make a motion? Counsel Johnson?
Motion to table for additional information.
Motion by Counsel Johnson to table for additional information, and supported by Counsel Beyondich. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I have one more thing under other items of concern. October 15th is tax day, so pay your taxes by October 15th, or face the consequences of a fine. So FYI, thank you. Anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up before we adjourn our committee of the whole meeting? Oh, yes, that's right, okay, I'm sorry. Yep, yep, thank you, Pam and Counsel Bearbo. You have before you a bid from Range Corners and Roofing Company, this came in this morning from Max Gray, they're going to replace the roof of the police garage, and this is a cost from, to do that, $26,677 and zero cents, for those who don't know, I'm sure you're all aware, that the roof kind of collapsed and water went everywhere into the, into the police garage and electricity, everything went bad. So, so I think that, this is the, this is the quote, they are going to replace the roof, back spray, as part of this, they are going to build the St. Louis County for that, and the county has indicated they're going to work out some kind of an arrangement with the city with respect to the repair of this roof based upon that. So moving forward, this is just a bid proposal for discussion purposes, for our information. I think, you know, we'll have our city administrator work with Max Gray and St. Louis County to determine the costs associated with that, who's going to pay for this, but this is the cost estimate from Range Corners, and the county has indicated that this is the company they're going to use to repair the roof at that cost, and so we are continuing to work with the county for that. And so I don't think we're asking for any action to approve this, but this is for information purposes. Counsel Johnson?
I think we do need to authorize staff to move forward with this process.
Yes, we do.
Because winter's coming, and I know that, and Representative from Max Gray was up here with Britt prior to the meeting with some discussions, so I would move that we authorize the staff to move forward with this project as needed, and figure out the details with who's paying for what, so that it can get done.
Thank you. A motion by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Bearbo, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those, I'm sorry, Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, there's no, on the bid proposal, there is no entity identified, whether it's a bid proposal to the city or a bid proposal to the county, and I think before moving forward, I believe in our last, our prior discussions, the county had stated that they would in fact pay for anything, so I don't, I don't know if I'm comfortable author, I mean, I'm comfortable authorizing city staff to move forward because we need to, but I don't know that I'm comfortable approving this without knowing who's actually going to pay for it.
Oh, that's what the process is to determine that.
Right, right.
This is, this is Range Corners and Roofing, they gave the bid not to us, they gave the bid to Max Gray Construction, who's doing the work for the county, this is what they're going to do to replace it, we're not obligating ourselves to any, any bid process here, they're not billing us, this is a proposal from Range Corners, Range Corners to Max Gray, who asked for that bid for the county, and so it's our information, I think the purpose, I think, Counsel Paulson, is to, you know, stay in the process moving forward, not make any decisions on costs associated with, from the city's perspective. So this bid isn't to us, it's to Max Gray from Range Corners, at the request of the county.
At the request of the county?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's the clarification I was looking for.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, anything else? Moved and supported? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up as other items of concern at this committee of the whole meeting before we adjourn? See?
Just a quick question, do we have a finalization date? We've gone over that Midway project again for the extension that we gave, haven't we? Or is that still a couple more days left on that?
Well...
Because I've had some questions from residents, they've asked, when is that project going to be completed? I told them, well, they got rain days in there now.
I must have 15 calls about that.
Yeah.
From residents and business owners, they're way behind schedule, they bid it out, supposed to start in June, they didn't start till July, they're way behind with the weather, they're going to have it done this year, but we don't have a projected end date, but they, they plan on having it done, so we could ask staff and engineering to determine what's your anticipated end, so we can notify these, the concerned residents and business owners.
Pam, maybe, maybe you can just ask that question of our administrator and engineering, and just send out a quick email so we can answer these residents a little bit better, because I've been telling them the same thing, because of rain and everything else, they're going to get it done, but I don't know when.
Well, I've been referring him to, to Britt, instead of trying to run it down on itself, so, but, yeah, yeah. Well, the, yeah, the anticipated date is the 18th of November, but, I mean, October, but that's not going to happen, so...
That's three days.
They're working, they worked on Sunday on it too, so, because I live there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, anybody like to bring forth before we adjourn? Hearing none, we stand adjourned, thank you.